We are recording it.
Okay, let me do roll call. Ms. McCora? Ms. Geary? Lisa? I know you're here, Lisa. I saw her.
Let me unmute everybody for this.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna say, it's not gonna work.
How's that work?
All right.
I know Lisa's here. Mr. Conyer?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Proctor? Ms. Lanzetta?
Here.
Mr. Calamano?
Here.
Mr. Bages?
Here.
Mr. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Baden?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Avardi?
Here.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Welton?
That's somebody else coming in.
Mr. Watkins?
Here.
Mr. Anquist is excused. Mr. Markowitz?
Here.
Now I know who's there.
Mr. Rudikoff?
He is excused.
Thank you. I get, he is. I got it on here. Ms. Weiner?
Here.
Mr. Murray? I know you're here, Bill.
He's muted.
Okay.
On his own.
I know he's here. Mr. McLachlan?
Here.
Mr. Bonavita Goldman?
Gio?
I'm here.
There we go.
All right.
You have a quorum.
Yeah, give me one second. I'm gonna mute everybody again. All right. Good to go.
So you got approval of minutes, right? Mike?
Yeah, you know, okay. Approval of minutes, so I have a motion to approve.
Just do a hands up, or raise your hand or something. Okay. Wilkin and McCarthy.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Oh, they're all on mute, so I guess none.
They can raise their hand.
All those in favor? Aye.
Yep.
Okay.
Just say, any opposed, Rob?
Yeah, okay, any opposed to it?
Any abstentions?
Nope. You're good to go.
Okay. Motion carried. Any education and training opportunities?
I would just say that, from my perspective looking at this, I get about three or four emails a day for various webinars and, and, and things that can be done. We try to pass them on to the board as we get them. Just, I, we, we will recognize any of those training opportunities that you attend by webinar or by, or remotely, we'll recognize them as meeting your, as counting towards, meeting your, meeting your training credits for the, for the year. Just send us an email that you attended them, and we'll go from there. But there's, there's, there's just, right now, there's just 50 or 60 different things that come in, I think, almost this month, in terms of, in terms of training opportunities. Including things on agriculture, things on the new solar siting law that went into effect. A lot of, a lot of efforts being done now with respect to, uh, um, things that can be done remotely. So we'll, we'll certainly recognize those if you want to send us and let us know which one you're, which one you're attending, and as we get them in, we'll send them out to board members.
Okay. Anything else? Moving along to, uh, community reports? Anybody have anything to say?
Hi, I'm here representing Hurley, but I just want to thank you for recommendations for the town of Asopis. We're still looking to replace Alan Zorinson, our planner. And we've had six responses so far. I got together yesterday was, or Monday was our deadline. And I want to thank the planning board, the Ulster County Planning Board for recommendations made because it has been difficult for us to try to take care of this.
Okay. Tom, did you want to say something? You had your hand raised there. Yes.
I was just wondering if anyone heard anything about the executive order that won 202.14 expires tomorrow. I think it's May 7th. That's tomorrow, I think. I didn't know if that, how, if anyone has heard what's going on, on that one. Because that's the one that was signed in, uh, April 7th. But we're going under, the one on this type of meeting is that 202.1, but 202.14 expires tomorrow. I didn't know if anyone had any update on that yet.
Do you have, do you have what's in that order that would be pertinent to us, Tom?
Uh, no, I don't know. I, not right offhand. But it was suspension of, I'm looking at the open meeting law now, and, uh, the highlight there was, uh, that one extends expansion, extension of in-person meeting requirement of open meeting law through May 7th.
Okay, we'll check that for you. Thank you.
As if they're opening up by region, by region. I didn't know. Since that expires tomorrow, there might be a new one coming out.
Yep, we'll check that. Particularly, as it pertains to the over-meeting law.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other community reports?
Community reports? Okay, and the planning board reports, chairman doesn't have anything. I'm not even gonna even ask you for mileage reports. And there hasn't been any committee meeting reports either. So, um, we'll move off to the planning department. Does?
On a financial report, the county executive and the finance department have, we start, we talked a little bit about this last month. They've instituted a hiring freeze last month. And what they did, this, they centered around a memorandum to cut at least 10% from your budget and submit those recommended cuts to the finance department for, and the budget department for consideration. So the planning department has submitted its recommended cuts. There are, they relate to our professional service category, not the staff category. We also, quite frankly, cut our, our, our conference, our conference attendance funding in our, in our mileage, given what we know now in terms of the, the planning board's mileage. And we've cut some, some other as well in order to make that 10% cut. For the, for the planning department is a little over $170,000, as I recall, to make that 10% cut.
Okay, Mike wanna say something?
No, that's okay.
No, I mean, Ben. Oops, sorry about that, Mike.
Question for you. I got that email you sent about the Phase 2 of the Brownfield study.
They delayed the release.
That's what I was gonna ask you. Is there a, a new due date?
No, it's, it was funny. She, our contact with DOS really got in touch with us ahead of time, said, oh, it's coming out next on the 29th. So get everybody ready. And then we did, and then I had to go back out and say, where is it? And she said she'd follow up with me when they were, actually did go forward with it. And she thought it was gonna be this week, but I haven't heard anything from her yet.
To, to give the board the context of that, Mike's question has to do with, we did, for five areas in the county, including an area in Rochester, we did what they call pre-nomination studies under Brownfield Opportunities. And Brownfield Opportunities are funded through the, what they call the consolidated funding application process. It was, we, we were told that it was going to be released on the 29th of April. It obviously wasn't. So we're waiting to see that release for the consolidated funding applications. We don't know what the state has in mind this year, given what the state is telling us, what the governor's talking about relative to the state's dire financial situation.
Right, except, except that funding is collected out of user fees. It's not really general fund money, so hopefully they won't defund it. But, uh, Rob, do you know, or any of the other municipalities? Have they shown any interest in?
I haven't, I sent the same email I sent you to the other four places. I haven't even seen a reply from them yet.
Okay.
So I don't know.
I'll follow up with you next week offline. I doubt I'll get to it in the next two days, but I'll try to follow up with you offline about what we have to do to maybe get that next, get that moving. So, thank you very much.
No problem. If you're gonna raise your hand, I actually use the raise hand feature because I might not see it out of the corner of my eye. What do you have? What's up, Ben?
Yeah, to answer the question about the executive order released to open meetings, I just looked it up. It's been extended.
Till when?
Thanks, Vince. You know how long?
Uh, I have to go back and look, but at least through June, I think it said. I'll go back and look.
Thank you. We'll confirm that and send something out so that everybody knows. Vince, if you could send me a, shoot, shoot me a quick email about that. I appreciate it. Thank you. The only other thing I have, Mike, on a committee report is the, the passage of the budget bill. I, I think I discussed this a little bit at the last meeting. I, I'm sorry, my memory doesn't serve me well. The passage of the budget bill included a expedited or streamlined review process for solar energy siting. And the board should be aware of that. We're, we're taking a look at that. We'll probably draft a planner's memo on it. There was a significant amount of pushback from the municipalities because it had originally had gone down to facilities that were small as 10 megawatts. It's now, my understanding from looking at it, reading the text yesterday, they amended that portion of it, and the, it, it's limited to 20 megawatts. And it starts at 25, but it's limited to 20 megawatts. They can opt in up down to 20 megawatts. And existing, existing facilities that are going through the approval process can also opt in if they, if they so desire. So it's not as, it's not as intrusive on the local home rule issues as it was originally proposed. And not, it also includes battery facilities, by the way, just so you know. And that's all I have, Mike.
Okay. Anything on, um, the notices or communications?
I have nothing to add on those, Mike.
Nothing to add?
No.
Okay.
Hey, Dennis, to answer your question, it's June 4th.
Thank you.
Not anything special topic discussion? None listed?
Well, let me, let me just kind of weigh in on that. I, I just wanted to chat a little bit about some of the social distancing requirements, particularly as it relates to trails. I would note that we have erected a number of signs on the counties of Shokan Rail Trail with respect to social distancing. I would say that there also has been some work done by the sheriff's department up there. And so there's been a, a really good, good work with respect to the county signage program. The folks from volunteers on the trail to talk about social distancing, as well as from the sheriff's department. So we've had some really good results up there so far. So we hope that that continues.
Okay. Drew, with more people out there this past weekend, it was pretty nice.
Yeah, there were, there are quite a few out there. And I was actually on the Waukeah Rail Trail, the Waukeah Valley Rail Trail, and that was busy as well.
Yeah, Drew, uh, Rob? You have him muted?
Who muted?
Drew.
Drew. Oh, Drew, I, I didn't, sorry. You have to use that, the raise hand functionality, not actually raise your hand.
Like, yeah, I don't see a raised hand functionality on the bottom of my screen anywhere.
It'd be on your picture, the, the three dots on your,
Oh.
Click the three dots, and then you can raise your hand. I think that's where it is. But don't worry about now.
Okay. Um, yeah, I've, I've personally have been avoiding the trails because there's too many people on it. In certain areas, it's kind of tough to social distance with reasonable, as so. But fortunately, I live on three acres, so I got lots of time to spend outside doing stuff.
Okay. Okay. Anything else before we go to zoning referrals? Okay. Rob?
All right.
Hey, Rob, if we don't have any problem, can you think about maybe unmuting everybody for, for the zoning referral portion?
Yeah, let me do that. I'm gonna, we don't have anybody. I don't think there's any members of the public in here. So everybody's unmuted now.
Okay, can I ask a question? This is Johanna. There was a mention about having the templates for signs, and I've had a request from the mayor in Ellenville to find out how to do that. So I, if somebody could get back to me about that.
What type of signs are you talking about, Joanna?
An email came through. Um, I'm, I'm not sure who it was from right now, saying that there were templates for signs that someone had designed.
What type of signs?
Signs on the trails.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's from the Waukeah Valley Land Trust. We could get you those.
That'd be great. The other question is, I can't find the raise hand thing either. It's not under the three dots.
Rob, it's, it's, if you, if you click on participants at the bottom of your screen, and it will bring up a window that shows everybody who was on the call. At the bottom of that, on the left-hand side of the bottom of that is the raise hand function.
I see. Thanks.
Well, we'll leave everybody unmuted for now, so.
Also, if you hit the reactions button next to the record button on the bottom of the screen, it'll bring up a, an emblem of a raised hand or a thumbs up.
It's a clapping and a thumbs up. It's not a raised hand.
Oh, okay.
Whatever you do, I'll assume it's a raise hand.
All right, but I, I see the raise hand. Thank you.
Okay, Rob.
All right.
Do we need recusals?
Chairman, are there any recusals?
Okay, town of Asopis, this is, my screen is covered up. Hang on. SCP Metal Fabrication, Special Park Site Plan Review. It's a 3,200 square foot commercial workshop for metal fabrication. It's south on west side Route 9W across from Mero Lake. I'm gonna bring up the aerial real quick for you all. So, if you can see that, this is Mero Lake over here. This is the site right over in here. That's the site. Actually, this is the site, excuse me. Access is from 9W over here. The access to the site is, they need a final approval from NICE dot, but they're compliant with NICE dot regs with respect to the curving. And no, they're putting a lot, no left-hand turn side out of the site onto it. So they know they can't make left-hand turns going northbound on the site. The accessway has a 15% slope on the driveway, so they need a waiver from the town on that, from the town's highway department, order a building inspector on that. I think it's the highway department. All right, I'm gonna go back to the
I have a question.
Sure.
Vivian. With a no left-hand turn sign, how, how do you make a turn into there from going north?
You, I guess you just make a left. I mean, it's a, it's not a high intensity use. It's a industrial kind of site, so.
I mean, do they have to go up north and maybe U-turn and come back?
That's probably what they would have to do, yes.
You can make a left-hand turn in. You just can't make a left-hand turn out.
Oh, okay. I get it.
Uh, what else? So also, it's compliant with the Route 9W overlay buffer requirement. It has 25 per day set of limits of disturbance on it, as you'll see coming up. Things you should know, lighting cut sheets, LED full cutoff for the site. SHIP-O had no concerns on it. They have a letter from the fire department. They had to provide a turning template back to them on it. Let's see, sign is compliant with the standards of the statute. So here's the site, and actually, let me move to the next one because it's a better plan. So you'll see there's a pretty significant slope up here. We'll need a permit from health department for septic. Final approval from NICE dot. Let's see, what else I mentioned? So there's your, there's your slope with that. I'll go back, go to recommendations. It's a steel standard, it's a steel building. Nothing too fancy. Sign. So, NICE dot health department, the slope waiver I mentioned. We'll just want them to put a note on the plan to preserve that existing buffer along Route 9W. Lightning levels should be provided. We know it are LED, but they should at least provide a lighting levels. And the one thing is whether or not they'll need, they should at least have a seven erosion control plan, given that slope and drainage into the state right away. But they should look, they're, have to make a determination whether it's, uh, there's a, a stormwater hotspot or not, given that it's a metal fabrication.
Rob, we were gonna use, we were gonna lose, lose that comment relative to the trace metals thing, right? Am I right on that or not?
Okay, I mean, they were gonna make a, they were, they were gonna review it and themselves and make a determination on that, so.
Okay.
We could lose the comment ourselves if you want to.
No, I'm fine. If, if they were gonna do it at the local level, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I don't have a final comment on that back from them.
Okay.
Rob, could you go back to the site plan for a minute?
Sure.
Is there, do we know what kind of vehicles are going in there? Are they gonna be getting, like, say tractor trailers? Is there?
They're gonna get large trailers. They, they, they provide a turning radius map. You can see, they're gonna be, they'll be going, backing up into here and then up to there.
Okay.
Now again.
So that's why they don't want a left turn out?
Well, and site distances.
You can see just like distances, and also as you come down this hill, then you got brush here, you got a lot of brush in there, and you got the site distances and.
No, no, that, that's, I, I didn't understand why you could do a no left turn out, but you could do a left turn in, but that makes sense.
Yeah, it's come, it's like distances coming around the hill and everything else.
Yep. Okay, as long as their turnaround is accommodated. What I wanted to make sure is that you didn't have people backing in off of 9W.
No, 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 that's not happening.
No.
Okay.
I have a question. With the steepness of the driveway, it's hard for me to tell. Is, is, is it possible that a loaded truck coming down would have difficulty stopping at the highway?
15% grades on short, on short areas are not, are not unusual. And what, if you go back to that site plan, Rob?
Sure.
And then what they do is they level it out as they get to the bottom. See, see it start to level out? So really steep up and through here.
You can annotate that.
Yeah, it's really steep up and through here, and then it starts to level out right in there.
Rob, I got a question similar to that. Did they, did they verify that a right-hand turn with a tractor trailer can actually make that severe turn?
I mean, they did a turning analysis for the site, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a 30, it's a 30-foot wide entranceway in there so that they, they can make that turn.
Okay.
And the fire department required it, that they do that analysis, so.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Yeah. I'll make the motion.
I'll second Vivian.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
We need opposed, just in case. Is there any opposed? Any abstentions?
Now, Mike, just ask if any opposed, as opposed to all in favor, because
Yeah, okay.
We wanted to record all any votes. And if you make a motion or a second, identify yourself when you do it, like Vivian did. Makes it easier.
Any recusals?
All right, Sora Variance. I don't have the site plan for that, so that's gonna be a required mod on this. So it's a very small site, just at the edge of Port Ewan, as you're approaching Iron Mountain on the same side of road, on the west side of road of 9W. It's actually, the access to it is actually off of Ulster Avenue, which is between, which is just west of Route 9W. I'll show you. Let me bring that up, actually. There we go. So this
Right in there, right, Rob?
This is the site right there.
Yeah.
So. So it's a pretty small site. They, the big, a lot of the variances, I don't have details on respect to how significant the waiver, the variance requested is. What I do know is the minimum lot size on the, is 15,000 square feet, pre-existing non-conforming lot. They have, what do they have? 2,700 square feet. And they want to do auto repair, and they display auto sales on the same site. They also need variances for 100 foot from whatever the frontage variant minimum is, and a side yard variance. And the driveway with, the width for the auto shop, which has to be between 16 and 24 feet.
It doesn't look like there's enough room for all of them.
Jeez.
Not a lot of room, I can tell you that.
Are you kidding me?
They're fixing Coopers.
That's the site from the road. I mean, you can't really tell very much from the road. That's, and that's from the 9W side of it. I should have taken a shot from the
But you didn't receive a site plan map or anything?
I did. The file was corrupt, so I, I need to get another file from it. But this is for a variance. So right now, staff recommends a require mod that they provide the actual balancing test so that we can see this, see if it's a pretty substantial variance, especially with respect to minimum lot size. And there are a lot of residences around, so we want to weigh that against the character of the community doing auto removal repairs. And also, that's a county route, Ulster Avenue, so they would also need approval for access from DPW. And also add on a site plan as a separate, uh, require mod as well.
Can you add on a re-referral, Rob? Because they,
Yes.
If you, if you said they're missing a lot of details in their original referral, I know we can't say incomplete, but we can say re-refer.
Yeah, I agree.
Required mod.
Yeah, really.
Good idea.
But this is just for the variance?
Yeah, for the four variances.
Yep.
We'd still have to do a site plan, right?
Right.
My sense is, is, do you really want to see it as a re-referral for the variances, or do you want to make sure they send it in for, for a site plan?
I think if, Dennis, my feeling is if they're missing that much information, we should see it as a re-referral for the variances.
Okay.
We're gonna have to see it as a site plan eventually.
Yeah, I, I have some concerns about the way that the site lays out.
They never even, my point is it may never even get to the planning board because this may die at the ZBA if they don't get their variances. So I, I think we should see it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for Mike's, uh, amendment there.
Okay. Conyer.
I got Conyer in there.
All right, so Gio, so I have a motion and a second. Now we have Mr. Conyer, the second already. Vivian, thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carried. Marlborough, any recusals?
Me, Cindy, Lanzetta.
Thank you, Cindy.
All right, so this is Tom Marlborough. You may recall, last year, we reviewed
Oh, you want to change your slide on that?
Changed my slide.
Yeah, we're looking at a parcel viewer right now.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at a different screen than y'all.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I figured you're looking at two screens.
Yeah. There we go. Better?
That's a lot better. That's a lot better. Thank you.
Okay, so may recall, last year Marlborough updated the comprehensive plan and also did at the same time their local waterfront revitalization plan. So the first act as part of that local waterfront revitalization plan is to, is this, which is a new chapter in the law, which is a waterfront revitalization program consistency review law. Which basically establishes the, well, they adds a chapter and provides for reviews within the waterfront area, which is the coastal zone. The coastal zone, unlike most towns in the Ulster County, I'm gonna go to the next slide on you to show you. Goes basically entirety of town except for this northeast area in here. So basically, so they will have a revisory review board for the LW, for their waterfront protection plan for everything except for that small portion of the town. That has to be consistent with, and they have a long set of guidelines and policies that are set out there to make those reviews, so it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and also consistent with the local waterfront revitalization plan. Let's see. So the, the only comment with respect to it, this, we, we issued an approve on the LWRP itself back last year is the scope of the coastal zone that they may at some point want to consider focusing it or reducing the size of the coastal zone, so it actually focuses on those areas that are specific to view shed or the waterfront area itself. It's something may
And that's advisory, right, Rob?
What's that?
That's advisory, right?
Yeah, totally advisory.
Yeah, okay.
Otherwise, no kind of impact, but just an advisory comment to focus that this, they're gonna add this layer of review for basically almost every application.
Yeah, I don't think they have a choice. The, the town does have a choice with respect to coastal zones. Once they have a local waterfront revitalization plan, the consistency determination is a is a requirement under that. The fact that it affects about 90% of the town is, is what I, I think we're concerned about.
Right.
And that would actually, I think in order to change that, they would actually have to ask the state to amend the coastal zone boundary.
Right, if they're interested in doing that. I mean, it, there's a variety, there's a large variety of, because it's so large, that's very on some hand, it's not so bad, because every project that goes through it has a comprehensive plan consistency review, which isn't the worst thing in the world. I mean, it takes a little bit longer, but it's not the worst thing.
Yeah, and, and we made the rec, you know, this is, it's funny how things catch up with you. We made the recommendation actually to extend that boundary out as far as it got extended, primarily on the basis of the fact that there are substantial areas in the town of Marlborough that are agricultural. And a lot of those agricultural areas, particularly the stone fruit folks, are dependent upon the Hudson River, believe it or not, and others with respect to air drainage, so that they don't have frost areas in, associated with those orchards. So the thought being, back in, when we were working on this, the thought being was that the coastal zone being extended to, to look at the, the influence of the Hudson River on the agricultural made some sense in Marlborough, and that's why it was recommended. And the state left it that way as well.
LWRP does contain a lot of references to agricultural and agricultural, agri tourism, things of that nature and preservation.
So you got recommendations, Rob?
Well, that was just the advisory comment.
So moved, Mike Baden. Second, Mitch McLaughlin.
Okay. Motion and a second? Any further?
I'll make the motion. Conyure.
No, we had it.
And the motion, uh, seconded. So, any opposed? Okay. Any abstaining?
Hey.
Yeah. You have a recusal, Cindy.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All along, motion carried.
Organies, Rob? Where did Rob go?
I'm, I'm here.
Lost you.
All right, Middleway School. It's a special permit and site plan. This is out on West Organies Road, but we got a I think Mr. Laverty is going to recuse himself on this one. I think that's why he raised his hand. So.
So why don't we ask that question?
Any recusals? I think he just
Yeah, he did. Yeah, Mr. Laverty is a
Okay.
Okay, so this is out on County Route 33. It's towards Woodstock Boundary, toward the county boundary. It's off, so it's an addition, it's a new building, almost 2,500 square feet to an existing school. It's a very small school, so it had, they're only putting in three new classrooms. Um, they have an existing septic permit out here, which more than covers what is the proposed addition is, well beyond it, so they don't need any new approvals from the county health department. I seem to be getting a chat message.
Okay. Mr. Murray.
Oh, Bill Murray is going to recuse as well. So, okay. Where was I? Uh, let me go to the aerial here. That is not it. That is not it either. There it is. Okay, so this is West Road. West Organies Road here. This is the driveway, actually a private road. The site is over in here. New building's gonna go over in there. Septic is back over in here. If you see my mouse, like an attitude. That's, there's new buildings about here. Septic's probably a little bit further back. And you'll see it on the, the next slide.
Yeah, that's way up there.
So this is existing conditions and is proposed, so here's the
Oh, we got a, we got the sidewalk?
Yeah, so when we reviewed this yesterday, we were gonna make two required modifications. One was for lighting and one was for pedestrian connection for the new building. About 10 minutes after that meeting, they sent us an updated plan unsolicited with those, both those fixes for the plan.
Good job, Rob.
Yeah, so it was mine, it was like a mine mill. So, because they put in the sidewalk here, that wasn't there, and they put in these two LED lightings over there. So, staff recommends no kind of impact on this.
Oh, moved.
Second. Conyure.
Conyure moved it. Who seconded it, please?
Drew.
No, I seconded it.
I moved it.
Who moved it? Who's I?
Vince.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carried. That's for both, right?
That's correct.
Yep, all right. We're already up to the last referral. Also, town of Organies, this on 9W, just south of the end, Bob's, recusing himself again. Let's see, so 9W, let me share the aerial. So here's this site. Big thing is, so they're putting a storage building for this use. This is a it's a monument business, burial monument business, so I guess they're doing storage for their work. So what we're, the only comment we have, it's a rear yard variance, just to come to maintain the existing landscaping in the back. And that no storage behind that proposed storage building should take place. It should be
Site plan for that, Rob?
Yeah, let me bring that up. Come on. It's kind of a, so where's my annotation? So here's the, here's an existing building. New building, and you have a, some trees over in here. There's residences behind it, so we just don't want to store anything between it.
We want to maintain that buffer right there, right, Rob?
Right.
And then not, not store anything behind it. Okay.
Correct. Those are the two comments.
And this is already in, right, this access?
And that, that business has been there a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the setback from the property line?
It's a, it's a, so it's, it's 37. They have a 50-foot setback, but they need a 13-foot variance.
Right.
I like, when you showed the aerial, it seemed like the screening was on the residential side, and it was nothing on, on the
Well, those property lines are never accurate.
Okay.
They're often off by as much as 30 to 50 feet, because it's two different data sets.
So.
Will this have to come back to us for site plan, Rob?
Uh, probably.
I'm just curious if, if, given that they're going so close to the line and it's residential behind, you might want to ask for some sort of additional screening, but that would be
Pretty.
Plan, not in setback, so.
Right.
It's, it's pretty thick back there, just so you know, but yeah, the main thing is not to cut it down, then we'll, we could do that on a
Right.
Yeah.
And also no light, and no, no lighting should be behind the building either, so that would trespass onto the property, residential property.
Okay. So you got a recommendation on this, Rob, or?
It's, should be on your screen.
No, we still see the site plan.
Uh, the aerial, you mean?
No, change the, change your slide, Rob.
Huh, that's weird. You see it now?
Nope.
That's weird. We're just seeing the map.
Hmm, it, it didn't change for you?
Nope, no.
Oh, I see what's happening. Okay, try now.
There it is. Now we're good.
Okay.
It pulled, I, I hit a pause share button.
Okay, yeah, can you get that lighting part as a required mod?
Yeah.
There's no lighting in the back?
Yeah, it'll be in there.
Okay.
Okay. I have a motion.
Motion.
I'll make that motion, babe.
Vivian. Second, Vivian.
Okay. Second, Vivian. Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any recusals?
We have a recusal. We need abstentions.
I mean, any obsessions, excuse me.
He's asleep.
Just getting into a rut there.
He's too close to the bed.
Okay. That's all we have for today, gentlemen and ladies. I thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I think it went very well.
Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, it's gonna turn
Second. All those in favor, you can say hi and say goodnight.
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 Bye.
Goodnight.
Night, everybody.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.